It is seven o'clock. I'd like to call this regular meeting in the Germantown Township trustees to order. We all rise with pleasure, ladies and please. Thank you. Mr. Easton, can we have the roll call?
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Cross.
Here.
Mr. Stubbs.
Here.
Mr. Potter.
Here.
All are present.
All right, visitor comments. Come on out to the front, Steve.
So that my friends pick you up.
Say your name and address, please.
Steve Mersch, 7347 Weaver Road, Germantown, Ohio. The Germantown Lions are putting on their 10th annual Twisted Pretzel Tour again this year fundraiser for local food pantries and civic organizations. So again, this year, the routes haven't really changed from last year, maybe a couple of small minor tweaks, but we still go over 7:25 out Creek Road to the dam and back with the young kids. That's our shortest route. That's the one that I'm most concerned about because they are youngsters in 7:25 to 7:25. So we've always had an officer on both sides of the bridge. You guys have supplied officer on the township side of the bridge and then Germantown, I believe, supplies an officer on the city side. So we're asking if that could happen again this year. Starts at 8:00 AM in the morning. I would think a short route with the kids would certainly be over by 11. You'll still have the longer routes will just come from the dam back into town over that, but they're the longer riders, they're the more experienced riders. So they, they know how to ride on the roads better, but they'll still make saves. We'll take whatever you guys can afford to, to provide. We appreciate your help that you've given us every year of these 10 years, and we hope that this year again, your budget and your manpower will allow you to help us out again. So any questions?
I don't see any reason why it wouldn't work out, so.
Right, well, we should probably get, try to get an officer and certain members, so the, you know, a couple of people that'd be out there. Jeff Donderos have our safety and road safety, so you'd be your first contact and I'm chairman of the event, so I'd be in touch with me if there's a if there's a, something Jeff can't answer. He'll be coordinating all of that. We also wanted to see if there's any way, I know you said when we started, before the meeting started, that the hill coming down the damn hill was, didn't look like it was going to get patched, but is there any way we could physically get some cold patch and put it on there? Or, I mean, it's a public road. I don't want to put people out there.
That would be a question for Montgomery County Engineer's Office.
Yeah, we don't, that's not ours.
I mean, I, I couldn't even bathom to give you any kind of suggestions or.
They're very slow down the hill. What about, I mean, would they say anything? We went out with a fluorescent can and sort of circled the potholes or anything?
I mean. We get a lot of paint.
Once again, I don't, it's a safety concern. What would you think? I can't, I can't answer on Montgomery County's behalf, but if it was my road and you wanted to do that, other than the safety concern of having people in their cans not watching traffic. Safety concerns more, if you had somebody there helping you.
Traffic isn't much of an issue on that steep hill. That's my point. It only takes one and, or my bigger concern is somebody going down the hill too fast, wheel goes in a pothole and they lose control of the bike.
Oh, I, I totally understand your concern and, but I'm, I'm talking about when you're out.
Yeah.
You know, if, if you're gonna do that, I would definitely make sure you had somebody.
I watch.
Hey, watch out or, you know, flagging traffic, you know, something, because I would hate to, because it is blind on the top side.
Right.
And I would hate for somebody to be, like, seeing the direct being.
Yeah. Appreciate it.
Will you guys put a sign at the top of the hill, dangerous or?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we have.
Oh.
Yeah, I've got big signs. We're in, people.
There's two words up by the top of the morning though.
Okay.
We'll have a radio on the bottom of the hill, makes there is a problem.
And even all of that, and we still get guys who are too macho to slow down.
The, the, I'm part of the Twisted Pretzel Tour Committee, and we sent a letter to the Montgomery County engineer asking him to take action, and we've heard no response.
I think if we. They're aware, but they've been, they've been aware for years.
We're not the only bikers who use the hill.
Yeah.
Others do too.
That's all I have unless you have more questions, and we appreciate your help. September 23rd is the date. That's a Saturday, and like I say, in the morning, we do start, the event starts at 8:00 AM, so if you have any questions down the road, you can direct myself for the Jeff and we can.
Well, thanks, thanks for organizing it, and I know it's for a good cause, so we can do the help is what we're gonna do.
We appreciate it.
All right, let's move on. Oh, any more visitor comments, anything? Move on to the fiscal officers' report.
Okay, thank you. Good evening again, everyone. First of all, I've given you the minutes from the July 10th regular meeting. Are there any corrections?
The only thing I had was the second page, the second line down. I think it read cest versus assist. Assistant, the first bullet point. Must be. I don't know how the highlight letter had different online.
Yeah, I will look for it. Any other corrections? I have a motion to approve as amended.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 7:10, 23 regular meeting minutes as amended.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
I, I opposed.
Thank you. I will look for that correction, Dr. Cross, and make that in the final copy that gets filed, posted to the website. I've also given you the July financial reports. As usual, you have the fund status at the end of July. You also have the year-to-date cash summary by fund. Through to the end of July, you have the month of July cash summary by fund. You have the July receipts and you have the July payments. I did want to point out four different items. First of all, receipt number 109, it's for $10,000, and it is, it's from Germantown Union Cemetery, and it is a payment on the loan that the trustees made back in 2006 to the cemetery board for a land purchase at the cemetery, and the remaining balance is getting low. It is only $9,276.23. So thank you, Mr. Stubbs, for processing that through the cemetery board. Receipt number 117 is our monthly interest from Star Ohio, $8,552.08, and the July interest paid 5.31%. So it keeps going up. Obviously, the Fed keeps raising rates, which makes our interest received higher. Payment 557 is $59,222.70. It went to Rumkey Waste Incorporated. It is our July through September trash invoice, and this is the last invoice at our current rates. Starting October 1st, Rumkey rates to the township will be increasing by 8%. And finally, payment number 558 for $85,975.50 to Strausser Construction, Inc., and that is for the Cape ceiling and the micro-surfacing on Wind Dancer and Starry Night Drives. Are there any questions about any of the financials? If not, could I have a motion to approve the financial reports and then authorize the payment of all the July bills?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the July financial reports and authorize the payment of July bills. Warrants 50688 through 50693, vouchers 509 through 633 for payroll, direct deposit, tax withholdings, and other electronic payments.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion of the motion? If not, okay, all in favor?
I.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much. I did file your resolution that was to place the road levy renewal on the November ballot. I filed that with the Board of Elections on July 23rd. I have not yet received the language that will be on the ballot. As soon as I receive it, I will get that reported out to you. However, I have received the language for the two aggregation issues that you will be, that you've placed on the November ballot, and they read as follows. Shall Germantown Township have the authority to aggregate the retail, and one will say electric, the other will say natural gas, to aggregate the retail loads located in the unincorporated areas of Germantown Township, and for that purpose, enter into service agreements to facilitate for those loads the sale and purchase of, again, either electricity or natural, natural gas, such aggregation to occur automatically, except where any person elects to opt out. And then also in that regard, Traybill LLC has scheduled one of the two informational meetings concerning the aggregation issues, and that will be held here at the Township Hall at 6:00 PM on October 18th.
So Mark, that would be considered a special meeting then for us?
No.
No, it's just he's gonna show up and.
It's an informational meeting. I don't think it's going to be a trustee.
Okay, so, so theoretically, we wouldn't have to actually show up.
Don't think so. I will check with.
Check with him.
With him to make sure.
I don't, I don't think when Germantown or Germantown had their meetings, I don't think they actually had City Council. I'll, I'll probably.
What day of the week is that?
A good question. I think it's a Wednesday, but give me one second. I'll pull my calendar up.
I guess I could have done that too. But you might have it handy.
It is a Wednesday.
Okay.
You make a note to call Traybill.
A question about the road levies. So how many road levies do we have that are used in comfort? Is this this one? The other one is a shared levy between Germantown.
No, that's the only levy we have.
So this is that levy? Okay, all right, well, it makes more important to pass it.
That's why I wanted to start early.
Thank you.
It is important to pass because otherwise, all we have is inside millage and a little bit that we get from the Gas Act, the permissive license plate fees, but there isn't much there if we don't have the road levy. All right, moving on, as I told you last month, Jane Roberts Powell did come to the township on July 11th to begin digitizing the township's rural cemetery records on findagrave.com. She did not complete her work that day. She will need to return at some point in the future, and again, this is being done at no cost to the township. Also, following up on an item we did last month, I was told by Germantown manager Judy Gilland that City Council has pledged $1,000 to begin planning our community celebration for the upcoming United States 250th anniversary in 2026, and they did that at their work session on 8/7. Chances are you were there, Dr. Cross and. It's all that, but added to your, the trustees' $1,000 pledge and a similar amount from the Historical Society of Germantown, we now have a commitment of 3,000 to get that celebration started. I did send out information to the Village of Farmersville, Jackson Township, Valley View Schools, and the Farmersville Historical Society because, Mr. Stubbs, you wanted that to be a full Valley View community event, and I've not heard anything from them. I'm hoping Germantown's commitment may stir them to at least consider it.
Well, I, I sent an email to the school board president who would like more information on it, and then I also spoke with Mike Moyer from Jackson Township, who also would like more information on it.
Reach out to both Mr. Schorer and Mr. Miller.
Moyer. Absolutely.
Just making a note to.
And I, it was, it was run that I emailed as the board president.
We have plenty of time, but.
Yeah.
We don't want to just let that thing slip away. So I will reach out to them. All right. On July 27th, I attended Montgomery County Auditor Carl Keith's presentation at Sinclair College on the 2023 real estate value revaluations, and I think most everyone's aware taxable property values have increased significantly since the last revaluation in 2020. Interestingly enough, Germantown Township's residential increase of 32.7% is actually the sixth lowest in the county. The increases in the county range from 16.6% in Jefferson Township to 48.0% in Perry Township, and Germantown's increase was 34.4%. The auditor's office, I have not seen my letters, but some people have already received their letters. They're, they're being sent out during August to explain the increase for each individual property owner.
Just add on to that, Mark. If you go to the auditor's site and find your property, the increase is on there.
It is. I did it today.
Even before you get your letter.
CAUV on it.
It doesn't give you that either.
That's not done, that's not decided yet, but interestingly enough, Butler County today released their CAUV. 109% increase.
On the Crete Wood Parlor, he said 110.
I think it was 109. Maybe it was 110.
Well, I mean, that's, that's.
It is 110.
For residential purposes, Auditor Keith has estimated that the, even though with the 32% valuation increase, it'll result in a 4% to 6% average increase in property taxes. The only jurisdiction in Montgomery County that will see a huge increase is those areas covered by Mymexburg schools, because those schools have, that's, school district has already reached its 20 mil floor. But I was also told by Valley View Treasurer Valerie Hill that Valley View's floor will now reach 20%. So with the next valuation in 2026, we will probably see a huge increase in taxes related to the schools. So that's, that's everything I can tell you on property value increases.
That's enough.
And it's not good news for anybody. Okay, last month's meeting, you passed Resolution 2023-33, authorize the milling and repaving of the Township Hall parking lot by Hauser at a cost of $36,390. And there was some uncertainty in my mind at the time as to whether the project could be paid using American Rescue Plan Act funds. So we made the resolution using authorized payment to come from the general fund. I since researched the ARPA guidelines, and I'm now convinced that the project can be paid using ARPA funds. There were two possible ways the project could qualify. One would have been by declaring the project to be a micro purchase. Under that category, we would utilize, what you had already approved was an increase from 10,000 to 50,000 of the micro purchase threshold, and you approved that back at the end of 2022 for 2023. Micro purchases do not require more than one quote. There were eight categories of micro purchases that qualify for the $50,000 threshold. I reviewed them. None of them seemed to fit our situation, so I moved on to the second way, and that would be to utilize the small purchase federal guidelines. Under this category, at least two quotes are required for purchases between 10,000 and 250,000, unless they qualified for the micro purchase up to 50, which I don't think ours does. So between 10 and 250, two quotes are required. The lowest quote must be accepted. Mr. Holbrook obtained quotes from both Hauser as well as Barrett paving. Barrett's proposal was 56,000 and change. The lowest quote was accepted, and, and so I think this category will allow us to use ARPA funds for the parking lot project. So I suggested two-step, two resolutions. One, resolution to, by roll call vote to, sorry, let me, let me back up. The first resolution would be to rescind the resolution from last month, which was 2022, 2023-33. I propose that you do that by a resolution, and then we will reapprove the project with a new resolution authorizing payment using ARPA funds. So let's start with using Resolution 202335.
I'd like to introduce Resolution 202335 to rescind Resolution 202333.
Second. Any discussion? If not, I will call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
And Mr. Potter?
Yes.
And so Resolution 202333 has now been.
35.
We've read, we, we've rescinded 202333 by adopting 202335. So that is correct. So I have given you the format for the resolution to use ARPA funds. This format was prepared by a North Canton law firm for the Ohio Township Association. We use the same resolution for the Segal Road, same format for the Segal Road last year. Now, I have actually upped the amount in this resolution from the amount that was approved last month, which was 36,390. I've upped it to 40,000 as a not to exceed, because we aren't going to seal the parking lot, I understand, until next spring, and then it'll have to be restripped. So I thought 40,000 would give you plenty of cushion. Okay, so if someone would like to introduce now, 202336.
I'd like to introduce Resolution 2023-36. How much do you want us to read up?
I don't know. Do you, do you feel like we need to read it? It's lengthy.
I don't want to read it.
Is anybody in the audience wish it be, to be read in detail? I would say, let's not read it then. Second.
Let me read at least the, now therefore is resolved by the board. That's the third page.
Okay.
Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the board that the township elected to use the standard allowance by way of Resolution 2022.
That's correct.
2022-16 and its presumption of revenue loss due to the public health emergency and to use the authorized herein to fund government services. Project is hereby authorized and shall be paid from the ARPA funds in the amount not to exceed $40,000. Project described herein serves the objectives of the act by providing services traditionally provided by a government. Accordingly, the project is in the best interest of the township and is deemed a priority for the county community. Obligations paid under the authority of this resolution were incurred prior to March 3rd, 2021.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion of Resolution 202336? Bring that, I will call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
And Resolution 202336 is adopted. Thank you very much. You know, well, the last thing I guess I want to say about that is, Mr. Holbrook, we need, now, since it's being used, we're using ARPA funds. We may, we need the contractor, Hauser, to sign the contract addendum, which I included in the email that I sent out. So you probably want to print that out. It needs to go in the file with the contract with Hauser for audit, just as we did last year. I think you got the same contract addendum signed. I forget who did. Was it Barrett that did Segal?
Yeah.
And if you can't find it, I can send it to you again.
Was that under my trustee meeting?
Yes, everything for tonight's meeting. It's one of the attachments. And my final reminder is, just for the trustees, we need to appropriate the remaining ARPA funds by the end of 2024 and spend it sometime in 2025. I forget the exact date. So we've got about a year and five months left to figure out what to do with the rest of the money.
And how, how much is left after this?
No. Let's assume that the whole 40,000 is used. We'll have 68,000 left. And with that, I'm done. Thank you.
Peter, 7865 Jamaica, I've got a quick question for Mr. Easton. Can the remaining ARPA money also be used? We're replacing. Could that also be? That, because I know, I don't know, we've been having roof issues, like, what, since I'm not here all the time. But just keep that in mind to look into that.
The answer to your question is yes, because we can use it for any normal government function, since we, we indicate, we decided it was all going to be treated as revenue loss. So it can be used for anything. Now, it'll then be subject to whether it makes the micro or the small purchase categories, whether we need one quote or two or more, but those can be figured out.
Is there any rush as far as getting an estimate? How's the roof looking?
I think the police roof is probably the worst of all, as I understand it.
Ceiling caved in.
Chief Anzig gets up.
Long fall periodically in the winter time in his office.
The room department comes through and fixed it. Like, we had to fix it. We just shoveled it all.
Yeah. So when was the last time the roof was repaired?
That was actually, that wasn't last winter. It was the year, year before.
How old is it? I've been fixed since you've been here.
Oh, it's been, it's been rough.
New roof.
Yeah, oh yeah. Supposedly those roofs are only good for 22 to 25, so.
In five or has it been 20?
No idea.
I'd say from memory, last time, still been sitting up there, I think, came to the term, termination of roof was over 20.
Yeah.
And.
When, when did they review that whole area at the police department? Because that was one of the times.
93, 94?
Slightly overdue.
Before I started here.
I guess what I'm asking is, do we want to proceed and maybe get some pricing? We got a ballpark on what this could cost?
We can, yeah, I can't hurt anything up here.
Yep. Inspection and get an estimate.
You're welcome for me putting one more thing in to do.
Haven't put it on me yet, not my building, my office has been.
It would probably be the police department, if you're only looking at their building. Well, if we're looking at all three roofs, it really falls down to you, to the three of you.
Okay. We'll discuss that.
We check into it.
Sounds good. I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Police Department report.
Uh, school resource officer, I received notice superintendent was going to be presenting the memorandum of understanding to the school board at tonight's school board meeting. Um, I invited him if they would have gotten done, uh, to come for our meeting, which basically could have just got everything signed on its way. However, uh, it must have gone over. Oh, really? Well, I'll deal with the superintendent this week. But all the only real concerns that had come up was the, uh, length of time a full-time officer should be a police officer before they become an SRO, which I gave them three years. And mostly I did that because a lot of times when you go to do anything in law enforcement, they want that three years of, of experience on the road. So when you go to become an evidence tech, three years. So I use that. And other than that, Mr. Scholler called and I spoke with him today and he said that, what would we do if there was training? And I said, well, I'm open. If they want to pay it all, that's fine. If they want to do a percentage or 50 50, I'd be fine with that too, depending on what the training was. And we can work well enough together to.
There's something that has to be in the contract though. What, what? Cause basically I unfortunately got that contract being right. We use so late.
Right.
Difficult to. Right. Well, what?
I don't think it's actually in the MOU. I don't remember seeing it.
Um, we had, we had discussed that, that if they want training, extra training for the SRO, it should be paid entirely by them.
Yes. If they, if it's something that is only SRO related, but if it was something that would be both men beneficial to both the police department and the schools, I could see us entering into an agreement.
That's my question. If this has to be added to the, to the MO, NOU, we really can't approve this tonight without that in the contract.
Right.
Because school is going to be starting before our next meeting. So we'd have that special meeting.
Or we can give, do we give Joe the authority to sign for us?
Yeah, we could, but yeah, we haven't really got a chance to read over. Think we should. Worst case scenario, we would have to have a special meeting to prove it when school starts.
I do have, uh, something to add since we were at the meeting. Kevin Cross, seven four 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 South Steiger Room. One of the, um, one of the school board members did ask a question about the SRO, um, contract. And they wanted to know about the ongoing, um, the ongoing training. And who was responsible for payment for that? So the other thing that they wanted to know about was they wanted to, who was, they want to know who was in charge of making sure that those officers meet the guidelines, such guidelines.
I'm sorry.
And, uh, Mr. Scholler said that he would take it to you and that guys would initial it. So I guess you would want to see those initials and changes probably before.
I would prefer that.
The, I did, when I did speak with Mr. Scholler, he asked, uh, about training. Every police officer has to do CPTs, uh, continued professional training. That is, we are reimbursed from the state for those. So he would, the SRO, myself, everybody has to do 24 hours this year. And that is reimbursed by the state. So it wouldn't be coming from the school and it wouldn't be coming from us. The other thing that came up was his training that he took last year. So there is no additional SRO training for him as far as to be an SRO. He went to the boot camp, uh, in October, uh, the last year, I believe. And so he doesn't have to do that every year. Just has to have that training within the first year of being an SRO.
And the same officer we used last year.
Yeah.
Cause I knew that they was wanting him removed.
There are, are people that did not agree with.
That tall?
And but that's the same officer we're going.
Was there anything in the, uh, referendum of understanding about our officer going up to Farmisville? I mean, I don't think there was. Maybe another thing.
I, if I could add to, at the meeting tonight, the only, um, memorandum of understanding was for German township. So there wasn't any from any other jurisdiction.
I'm just going to add to if I can.
David address.
It's Abigail Hail Dennis, one three zero nine one Oxford Road. Uh, one of the school board members wanted weekly updates from the SROs.
Okay.
On how they are engaging actively with the students. They had went to, what was that? Some Ohio, something on safety. And.
There's a lot of SROs.
Yeah, there was a lot of SROs and I made a point that ours was not there. And we just wanted to see if they could be, I guess, engaging more of the students. They do mop trials at other schools and all this other stuff.
Uh, I, I would, I recommend get those changes made to the contract and then send those up, send a completed memorandum, I should say to us so we can read it and then begin. You'll have to get some special meeting together before school starts.
Well, there's change. If there's changes to it, the school board is going to have to.
Reapprove it too. So talk to, talk to Joe Scholler. So. I think that's our only pretty much way of doing it. I think we just got started a little bit. We probably could have gotten stuff. Other questions or comments?
Next, National Night Out is Tuesday, October 3rd, six to eight. Uh, we will of course have our canine do a demo, probably have another dog also there. Obviously everybody come out. Enjoy.
Hot dogs.
Don't know what we're going to do yet, but probably hot dogs are never off the list. So, um. And lastly, I would like to request an executive session to discuss hiring.
Now that would, we would use O R C one twenty one, twenty two G one.
Discuss appointment.
Someone I can make a motion to go into executive session?
I'm going to go into this executive session per O R C one two one point two two G one to consider the employment of a public employee. I have a second.
Second.
Go down the rest.
I didn't hear you, Mr. Keener.
So can we wait till we do executive session after?
At the end.
We don't have to stay. That's how we've done.
Yeah, I, I have no problem with that. We can wait till the.
So you're going to withdraw the motion? You withdraw your second, Mr. Scherz?
Yep.
Okay. We'll come back to that later.
And that concludes my report.
For the department report, Jeremy?
Uh, just a few quick things. We've already all seen the new parking lot. I think Hauser did a pretty good job. Obviously second item, the twenty twenty three chip seal contract is being completed by Radiance Incorporated. And I think all those roads turned out really well. Uh, we did have some, some malicious burnouts on Tupper Town Liberty, but they were able to kind of up those out by bringing some extra stone down aggravating, spend that kind of tax money. Or the day is over, somebody already set it up, but the third item is I have contacted two market companies and got quotes on putting center line down on the roads that were chip sealed, uh, this past month. And I contacted A and A Safety, who's actually who got Montgomery County's bid. And a company called Arrowmark out of, I think down near Cincinnati. Uh, the quotes for the 10.62 miles that we're going to have done A and A Safety came in at 13,140 dollars and eighty seven cents. And Arrowmark came in at 17,007 88. But these are under the bidding threshold set forth by the state. It's my recommendation that we go with A and A Safety. We just asked the board to pass a resolution allowing me to go into contract with A and A Safety for the stride center line striking at 10.62 miles in German township and to authorize me to sign.
Uh, thirty seven, 2023 37.
All right. To pass resolution 2023 37. Uh, the board to pass a resolution for A and A Safety to do the restriping and center lines on the roads that had been chip sealed through the 23 chip soap program and authorize Jeremy Holbrook to sign on behalf of the township.
Second. Any discussion of the resolution? And I'll call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Resolution 2023 37 is adopted.
And that's all I have.
Zoning department report.
Um, we had seven permits written in July, livestock barn on Friend Road, uh, new residential construction on seven 25. Shed on Steiger Road, shed on Oxford Road. A residential addition of a three season room on Oxford Road, fence on Manning and a commercial storage building for Valadu Local District. And the German Township Rural Zoning Commission will hold a special meeting tomorrow, Tuesday, July 15th, 2023 at 7:00 PM to further discuss regulations on small solar farms as well as residential solar panels. August. Um, and then this is not zoning, but it's trash. Um, I, I spoke to Jake. I've been looking into being able to set up, uh, the ability for our township residents to be able to pay their trash bill online. There have been a million requests for it. It would make their lives easier. It will make my life easier. Um, I sent the numbers to Mark. Um, it would only take a couple of weeks to set up so we could have it done before the October bills went out. Um, right now we pay them 3,125 dollars a year. It would only add another thousand dollars a year. Really? I mean, that's less than a dollar per customer. Per year. I don't know what kind of questions you guys have, but um, they'd be able to pay their fees online. We can put a link on the bill. We can put a link on our website and it can take them. They just type in their number. They could take care of it. They would pass the, the fee onto the customer. Um, I'd be able to do a report that showed, because I have to do reports to, to, for the deposits for Mark. And I could be able to do a separate report that showed all of our online payments. Um, people would be able to do payments over the phone if they wanted to.
So do we add the, the fee, the credit card fee to their bill?
Yeah, it would. So there's no cost for us for the initial setup. But it would add a thousand dollars a year additional to what we already pay. And then there's like a, there's two different processors that we can set up. We can, we can choose one. Um, there's an account set of fee and then we could use PayRock or Express Bill, Express Bill Pay. And it's like a three and a half percent processing fee to pay online, but that would be the customers.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they know that there's an extra fee to pay.
But most people don't care. Yeah. They're more than willing because it's just.
So it doesn't come out of our pocket.
So I don't know what you guys think of it. If you have any questions about it, I'm all for it. Cause one person trying to process $60,000 trash payments in a few weeks, it's a lot. If I don't get to them fast enough, people crouche at me.
So we're going to, this is setting it up for online payment. Does that give us a credit card reader here where somebody can?
No, um, it would just, it would, we could put a link, like I said, put a link on our website. We could add the website. You know, their link on the trash bill. And if they wanted to come up here and do it, I can jump online and do it for over the phone.
Okay.
So there's no need for a credit card swiper.
Okay.
So I don't know if we, if you guys are all right with it, if you got more information, if you want to do a resolution, I don't know where we go from here. I'm, I'm.
This was brought up previously a couple of years ago. It wasn't. Had the, she had her homework done. And I have no problem. Just so it's that, that cost, they know the cost is going to be three and a half percent or whatever. It's going to show up on the bill.
Yeah. I mean, I would assume if I jump online to pay my AES bill, it tells me if you're going to pay by credit card, there's some, some. I don't care. I'm going to pay it online anyway. So I would assume there'd be some kind of message to let them know.
We might have to pay all bills. So I should, otherwise I should know the answer to this question. Would there be a savings? Postage will like have to.
No, because I would still have to mail bills.
And email bills.
Mr. Jacoby, would you go through the formalities?
Address.
David address.
Jacoby, one two nine five five Harris.
Thank you.
Good night. Clark.
Well, they also have the ability to pay their zoning.
I believe I can set that up as well. I was less worried about that. I know when my miss Sewell brought it to you guys, it was for zoning purposes. And to be honest, I really, if it was just zoning, there's not enough money to come through zoning to justify it. But trash bills, absolutely. I mean, I, on, on a given day, for the first three weeks after the bills go out, I get about five to six thousand in the mail every single day.
Is it, uh, are, are, is, are we locked in for a certain period as we say we set this up? We don't like it. Can we get out of the contract? There's a.
It says there's an initial three-year term. Then we can terminate without cause if the terminating party gives the other party 60 days of written notice. So we have three years. But it's through I work who, that's who we already use, which I feel like is going to be the easiest route since we already use them to do it all anyway. And I, I have not had any issues with Iowa. Any customer service, I, they've been really great so far with me.
I mean, I don't have any trouble starting it now because that way we'll, we'll be ready for the new October increase bills. So I need to always hear people.
Yeah.
I agree.
If you guys have questions or want more information, I mean, I can have paperwork. I send it to Mark. I can make copies for everybody if they want it. If, you know, if you're not ready to jump on it yet, it's up to you guys. I just wanted to bring it to you.
I really don't have any questions. I mean, said it pretty well. Anybody else have?
Yeah, I think we should go ahead and move forward with it. So it's good to go for October.
So if you're ready to make that decision, I think we could do that by a motion. I don't think that would necessarily need a resolution. So.
Wouldn't hurt.
Okay. Well, we can do a resolution. Thirty eight.
I'd like to introduce resolution 2023 38 to on a do all credit card payments for the trash bills and zoning fees. That'd be correct.
Through I work.
Through I work. Online payments.
I'll second.
I think it, it may make it easier for you too, as far as people paying their bills on time. They won't have a.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Any discussion, further discussion? Okay. I'll call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Resolution 2023 38 is adopted.
And that is all I have.
I'm going to add just a little bit more to the zoning report. Basically encourage residents to attend tomorrow's zoning commission meeting. If they want to give input on small scale solar facilities as well as residential arrays. Referring to the seven, 10 minutes, a permanent moratorium on small scale solar cannot be issued by the township. We must, we must do it through some regular regulations. That's from the, um, from our legal counsel. I did speak with Stefan Brydenbaugh on eight, two, 23, and Ed Everman on eight, nine, 23 to discuss whether to approach the Montgomery County Commissioners to consider designating most of German township a restricted area where large scale solar, which is greater than 50 megawatts, and wind facilities not located. But the greeting might be worth a good, might be a good for a step to email one of the commissioners to get their opinion on the matter. Either knew of any other townships in the area, Jackson, Jefferson, Perry, that had appraised, approached the commissioners. So I'll try to approach them. I don't know how, you know, they're, they're pretty gun-hell on solar. I don't want to do a whole lot of work and then, you know, they go in front of them and they say no anyways. Okay. That's all I have. Trustee reports. Mr. Potter?
Right. Um, parks, parking lots are done. All looks good. No issues as far as I know. Uh, we did. Uh, we did have a citizen come to the last meeting to ask about pickleball courts. Um, they really have no place to put one except on across the road there and at Jim Webber's site. So, um, Tom. He had talked to his doctor Pat regarding some grants for the pickleball courts. Also, we discussed, um, the defibrillators. I mean, like three defibrillators in the park area down there, and also drinking fountains with pet. Bowls on the bottom. So trying to get some grants on that. Other than that, everything's pretty quiet on the park, as much money as spent.
Can I ask a question? Okay, I'm saying my name again.
Say your name.
Already done that?
Okay, well, Kersher Park being late, that was a joint parks levy for German Town and German Township.
Correct.
Okay, I was just curious, because German Town to me looked like they took all the credit for it. And when I was responding to people about it, I was making sure I was giving back the correct information.
Are giving the correct information.
That was our joint parks levy month.
That's correct, as far as I know, all the money come, we, we even gather all the money here, and then we give it to them.
That's separate from the pool also.
Yes.
Who was that joint levy also?
Well, it's a. Well, the joint level that is.
That's a different, yeah, different levy.
There's a joint.
But the actual parking lot had to be advanced, the money from German Town to both municipalities. For thirty paying for those. Not we, German Township, German Town.
German Town advanced out of their general fund money. That the parks budget will pay back over, and I think, two years.
Or two years, yes.
Okay, so that part of it is emptied out then for us?
That part as well.
That part of the parks levy is emptied out for us then?
Uh, not, not all of it, I mean, they still have some building money left, I can't tell you how much is left.
So basically, it was done equal with the township and the town, but town didn't do it all.
It did. Only thing the town did was, was, uh, give some money in advance that we have to pay back out of the park levy.
What about on Astoria in front of the park?
That'd be the city.
That would be the city.
Yep, the road park, out of their street park.
I just don't want to miss being mine.
Anything.
No, thank you.
That is joint levy. But actually, the township gathers and then forgives to the ninety percent of it, we give to the city.
Okay, I just don't think a lot of people understand that, my thing, the town takes a lot of credit for things that we should give.
Is that a Facebook thing or something?
No. No, actually, we're just talking to people too.
Okay.
Talk a lot.
I don't understand, Mr. Potter, the question about the pickleball courts, because the tennis courts are striped for pickleball.
They are wanting their own courts. That they're just, the citizen that came there, he, he just, there's a big following according to him, they would want their own courts.
Dedicated.
Dedicated pickleball courts.
Okay.
Understand.
Five five Harris, the pickleball. Stripes on the. Courts down there were actually. So pickleball players don't want to.
They're correct for some. Some ways to play pickleball, but not.
But not standard lines.
If I understood them right, the net is in the way and it has to be removed each time they want to play pickleball.
That makes sense.
So it had, that's.
Thank you.
I've had two meetings with Judy over the past month, one of them with, uh, Judy and a man named Aaron Sorrell, who the city has. Hired as a city planner. Uh, and it was basically just to introduce myself and to introduce them about what we had plans on at the MMI. And their hope is to do something with the Metro Park and Scott Ridle possibly down the road that's connecting a bike trail of some sort. Um, it all went well, it went just fine. Uh, second meeting we had with, with Judy was. Um, there's eighteen acres of farmland down there that, uh. Is, it's up for re, um, contracted up this year. So discussing on how to do that on, on rent. Yes.
Throw around Kersher, is that what?
That is. So I talked to her about that. Um. Also, is having a meeting, or she's having a plan about, um, giving people, employees and the employees of. And even council members and people on boards of having a, uh, reduced rate. For the pool passes, rental stuff or shelters or anything like that. So they've been talking about that, so she was just getting some insight about that kind, so. She had got, uh, some, um, pricing on what West Carroll and Miami'sburg, and about all of them does, anywhere from twenty to fifty percent reduction of.
Money coming in for.
Yeah. But it's.
I can't see why they, why, well, we don't have to approve it, do we?
No, we don't have to approve that.
I would be against that.
She hoped it would insight to help people come to be on boards and stuff, to have a little bit of rate to use facilities. Instead of unpaid. Or members, it wouldn't be that many.
Yeah, interesting, but I disagree with interesting.
I'm sure. Um, MMI, um, cleaned up the mulch pile, took me a couple of days, all twenty five loads of mulch out of there. Um, and a load of logs. Um, hoping to get, uh, now we'll get the, uh, buildings laid out. So we'd see where they are, so we'll be able, uh, lay out for the parking lot and hopefully the parking lot will get gravelled yet this year. Really the only thing we'll hope to get done. We got two plaques, one for the MMI and one for Camp Miami. Uh, hope to get them ordered, maybe get them yet this year, but it. Um, the pool, I was unable to attend at the last meeting, they did not have enough board members, uh, for a forum. As far as I know, everything is going good. I talked to Jeremy a couple of times. Uh, parking lot, they have a little hole back there to. Where the police department comes out of, made a dam when they did the parking lot, but working on a solution for that. It's done.
Figured that.
Um, also, it's talking to him, I've been noticed and I'm in Purple County a lot and Butler County, I've noticed that Purple County. The Purple County itself are spraying, uh, Johnson grass invasive weeds alongside their county roads. Which, if you have noticed, Johnson grass is, you need to be really bad as an invasive weed. I was talking to Jeremy about what his thoughts was of us possibly starting to do that on our township roads. And I would like to get in contact with the county, because the county needs to do that more than the township does. So, uh.
Metro Park.
In Metro Park, you have to end up.
Boomer shine there.
Every year.
Every year, this gets worse and worse.
So, um, we worked and I'm still talking to him about that. Um, and I did file for my election, uh, in November. Um, I'm all signed up to do that, as far as I know, running unopposed unless you've heard.
You are unopposed and you are certified.
As am I.
As are you. And, uh, that, that's all for me.
Excellent, appreciate it.
I went up to the MMI the other day.
What's your name?
Adam Cross.
Blue down temple.
And it looks really nice up there, Morpheus and I went up there and he really enjoyed it. Um, he did say that he would like to see a dog park up there, that would be nice. Princeton area. Really nice for it. It'd be nice for other people too, I just don't know if everybody would take care of it.
Well, that will be down the road, of course.
Yeah, that would be.
That's our certain things we've got to get done first, so as we get them done.
On the back burner.
On their back burner.
Um, the other thing, um, the pool, I have run into a couple of people with my dog, because he's a big draw, of course, in town, and I have had a couple of people say that. They couldn't go to the pool because they didn't have the funds to do it, does the pool do anything for the community that maybe can't afford? Go to the pool, can't afford?
I have not heard that mentioned at all, but as far as I know, no.
That might be something that we wanted to.
But that would take.
And it could be need based and, you know, it would be something nice, we have so much of German Town, German Township that that gives back. And it would be nice to see the boat or something like that maybe too.
Okay. I didn't bring that up.
So create like a fund or a application process or something that. Yeah, true.
Income based.
Could that be some vouch for like?
I don't know if that's what we considered, you know, a real necessity.
That would be kind of like baseball.
Yeah.
Yes, so I'm probably going to say, say no, yeah.
But it would, it is, it would be nice for the kids, but I see that would.
Oh, I'll talk to Sean and do what she's talking about on the trash thing.
Anything else? Mr. Stubbs?
I just have a few things tonight, uh, cemetery, um, so the cemetery actually places their own levy on the, on the ballot, which I, I thought we did it through here, so. Uh, we are in the process of deciding, actually, I think next month we're going to make a decision between a renewal and a replacement, and I think we're leaning towards replacement. I think we decided it's, it's been at least ten years, probably longer than that. Since it's been replaced, so, uh, that's on the, that's on the, um, agenda for next month. Um, we are also looking to, I gotta talk to Jeremy again, we're, we're gonna put our Ferris IS five thousand mower on gov deals, if you could. Work with Keith on that, I'd appreciate it and getting it.
We might just.
How can we do, is that easy to do?
Yeah, it's not hard. Getting.
Okay.
I mean, that way.
That way he's got it.
Yeah. Cause he's kind, he's gonna check his email and, you know, he can be on top of it.
Perfect.
You know, if I have to forward stuff to him, it's just.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's not that big a deal, but I mean, it would just be. Less headache.
Okay.
He would like that anyways. He would like that.
Yeah.
And take care of that himself.
Yeah, so if you don't, can you get with them on getting an account set up, I'd appreciate it. Uh, so if anybody's interested in a, a big mower, it's going to be listed on gov deals here before too long, we declared it excess tonight. Um, the cemetery has also requested that we send our current sick. Vacation comp policy to them in nineteen ninety six, uh, when they established the policy. It hasn't been updated since, and they just copied ours in nineteen ninety six from here and took it down there, so is there any way we can send just our? Sick vacation comp policy down to the cemetery?
Sure, vacation, comp, and what else?
Sick. Yeah, we haven't updated that since nineteen ninety six.
Not sure.
Right, though.
Yeah, it's been a little updating.
A little, but not, not substantial.
Um, I have nothing with the WRCG, uh, so, other than saying I disagree with giving board members discounts. That, that concludes my report.
Thanks, Mr. Stubbs. So, uh, my report, I attended the senior oversight committee on seven thirteen twenty three, the highlights. Membership is up to two hundred and eighty two members, fifty two are non-residents, five rentals in May, June, and two rentals scheduled for August. The senior center is under budget for the Jan, from January to June, so this first six months. Revenue was way up due to Nella Judy donation of three, three hundred and seventy nine thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty cents. City is formulating an emergency operation plan, one item under consideration is to have the senior center be an emergency gathering place. This would require that the senior center purchase a generator. One estimate received was one hundred and eighty two thousand dollars and, one hundred and eighty two thousand fifty dollars. The city is trying to get a grant to cover one hundred thousand dollars of the cost. According to Judy Gillett, and the grant, if received, would probably become in much less. While waiting for the grand, grant decision, the city will get another estimate for the generator. They stated that the generator costs would be an excellent way to use some of the don't know Judy gift. There was discussion to replace the vinyl flooring in the senior center, the kitchen, kitchen area has sun piles coming up, the rest would be purely cosmetic. Oversight advised at the center, get an estimate for the entire area and just the kitchen area. Oversight advised that they would not approve the expenditure to replace the tile just for cosmetic reasons. No reason, it looks fine. On seven twenty four twenty three, I had, uh, the revised article two definition section. They took that, the German Town zoning resolution recorded at the Montgomery County Recorder. On the same day, I met with Jeremy Pop, Montgomery County Mapping Manager concerning updating our zoning map, includes zoning changes. And the three parcels since the current zoning map was printed on one twenty five twenty fifteen. My goal is to have the updated maps distributed to all the zoning commission, BZA and trustee members, which I did today. So this is a new map, which I gave to Jake and and. Our calls, so. Uh, I picked up the maps on seven thirty one twenty three, I got twenty small zoning maps. Two large framable maps, like the one that's in the zoning office. One large zoning map freeze by the boards and two photographic maps to use as necessary for presentations, so I brought the large one, please want to help me here. So if we ever have a case where you really need to see the detail of the township, this is our zone. This is, this will be larger. It could be a little bit larger, but this is plenty big, so. So also. And. With these photographic. Made up, so basically, the biggest thing about this, you know, this is all the farmer in the west part thing, so. If I go to see the commissioners, I'm going to bring this along and say, hey, this is well protected, so. So I've got one of these opportunities, so it's, so it's actually very easy process to go down there and it's all free, so all the maps are free, so. Um, I attended the German Town Council meeting on eight two twenty three, the highlights, council passed a resolution authorizing the city managers to enter into an agreement with ODOT to repave State Route Four within the German Town city limits. Work is planned for next year for the total cost of eight hundred and ten thousand dollars, the city's portion will be a hundred and sixty two thousand dollars, which is twenty percent. The city had a work session, consultants for the downtown redevelopment project gave a presentation. They stated that ninety percent of the draft had been completed, there was concern that several downtown building owners don't want to help respect tenants with upgrades, and that would allow new business. It would allow new businesses to move in there. There's also discussion on a possible four way stop at Market Main to help slow the traffic and possibly attract visitors to downtown, I don't know how that would go. Rest of the work session was a discussion concerning the cover bridge downtown. Consultants for the project gave a total cost, including design and construction, to be nine hundred and forty six thousand, two hundred and thirty three dollars. The grant was approved in March twenty twenty three to cover the some costs, but the cost of the city will still be five hundred and thirty nine thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars. Judy Gillett has stated that the city hopes to use ARPA funds, but the city may still need to borrow money for the project. Construction is estimated to begin on, in ten twenty five, so. More years, in last through four twenty six, I was informed that emergency repairs will be done on the bridge to get that, uh, to get to that construction date. On seven thirty one twenty three, I talked to Lonnie Peterson from TSC Hanson Communications and was told that most of the fiber optic cable is in the ground. And hookups to residences will begin in about one to two weeks. So have you heard anything?
It's not in the ground in front of my house.
Yeah, he sent me a map and it was just.
Yes, they are finally, we didn't have internet, Abigail Hill Dennis for a week. And they said that we should have received a year ago a thing saying we could have a line drop.
Right.
The house, and we never did.
So did they actually send that to you or a letter?
It's supposed to be coming, because I asked her if I could also have a written copy, and they did come and do something to our house, but it's not like, of course, into the house yet. But.
So I got the impression from him that they were actually going to start, you know, connecting the cable, the road to the houses.
It should be pretty soon, it sounded like.
Yeah, but it's all my lady did it, you know, they haven't come in front of my house yet.
So. So I don't like, I did at least wanted to, because you, you, you had a concern, so I called it, Bob, he did.
Yeah, for a week with no internet.
Internet, so yeah.
Told me I needed to let them know, I said, I called you three times now. Girl was not very friendly.
Ask a question about zoning.
Not sure.
Um, is there?
Um, is there a way I can get access to a map that has all township roads and county roads? So, I know which are which, because I feel like we get a lot of flack in the township for not maintaining roads that are not ours.
We have a list from the police department of all the township roads that I can easily send.
It's on the website.
It is on the website, okay. That's my fault. Okay.
But we do, you're right. We get a lot of crap. On the Facebook.
And once again, I don't want to misspeak.
Uh, that is all I have. Any old business? New business? Let's do this again. I'll move, I moved to go into executive session for ORC one two one point two two G one. Consider the employment of a public employee. Have a second? Mr. East might have a roll call.
Who did the second? Mr. Stubbs?
No.
Mr. Doctor Gross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter, yes.
Okay, it's now eight eleven. The board will now move into executive sessions.
Now 8:48, I move to return to our open session. Have a second?
Second.
Mr. Peterson, can we have a roll call vote?
I think that only needs just, it's a motion to go back and just be a voice vote. If you're comfortable with that, we can do a roll call if you'd rather. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're back in session at 8:48.
So basically, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?